City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Autumn Wilson.
Here.
Autumn Holmes.
Here.
Autumn Tindham.
Here.
Autumn Grover.
Here.
Autumn Rainey.
Here.
Autumn Burris.
Here.
Autumn Fisk.
Here.
Autumn Braithwaite.
Here.
Autumn Nguyen. Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, December 8th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. My announcement is happy holidays to everybody. Next is city manager, public announcements. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I have several items. First, I'd like to ask Marcia McMahon, who is the Regional Chief Professional Officer for United Way, to come up. Marcia has an announcement to make. Good evening.
Good evening. I actually have a very exciting announcement to make tonight. United Way is very pleased to announce the addition of eight new communities to our Live United Neighborhood Network efforts. And those communities are Auburn Gresham, Austin, Bronzeville, Cicero, Evanston, Little Village, Robbins Blue Island, and South Chicago. And these new network communities will join the already operational networks in Brighton Park and in West Chicago, which just launched last, the end of last summer. It's a very exciting time for United Way, and I'm really, really thankful that United Way has been chose, I mean, that United Way has chosen Evanston to be one of our early neighborhood networks. The next eight networks will launch in two cohorts, and Evanston will be among the first. And so what exactly does that mean for Evanston? In Evanston, United Way will work with the Cradle to Career Initiative to advance the goals of that initiative, which are really focused and targeted on the Evanston community. I want to be very clear that the networks and Cradle to Career are not two separate initiatives, they're one and the same, that Cradle to Career will be our Evanston neighborhood network for United Way. So that's really very exciting. You know, I think part of that was recognizing the great work that's already been going on in this community, that it started almost two years ago with Cradle to Career, and really seeing and understanding that, that work that had been started here really aligns very, very well with United Way's neighborhood network vision. And that vision is around a collective impact model, that communities will come together, create a common agenda, decide common goals, and really make those goals very bold moves for the community. And for Evanston, that's to make sure that we're enhancing the lives of the youth in our community and making sure that they have the tools they need to be successful. So what does that mean in terms of resources? I'm happy to announce that as a neighborhood network, Cradle to Career will receive an initial planning grant of $50,000, which will help advance the work that they've already identified. That can be used at the discretion of the initiative, there are no strings attached to that. We recognize that the initiative and in each community, the lead partner or the community coalition will determine the uses of the dollars that are given. And that's in year one. And by the end of the year one planning period, we're hoping to see solidified those common goals and outcomes that we all agree upon as a community. Then in year two, there will be another grant, which will probably be around the $100,000 level to help advance that work. And then year three, we'll also see another incremental increase. So the network plan from United Way really focuses on the first three years. The idea is to kind of jumpstart the work in the community, get things moving, and then hopefully the coalition will be able to take over and forward that work from there. And it's important to note that these dollars that are being awarded are over and above the regular grant dollars that are invested in Evanston. Additionally, United Way will share resources around data collection and the development of a data system that all of our networks will use. We're really hopeful that Evanston will be the pilot program for our data system, so that we'll kind of pilot it for all of the networks. And then there'll be opportunities for all of the networks in the region, all 10 of them, to come together, share best practices, talk about what's working in their community, and also kind of be open to what's going on around the country in terms of collective impact. So it's a very exciting time at United Way, and I'm very happy to be able to kind of see this work here come to fruition in the announcement of the neighborhood network.
That's great. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to ask Rob Lloyd, our manager of the Robert Crown Center, to come, and he's brought some special guests with him.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Green, Holly. We are, we're coming to do a brief introduction of the Nutcracker coming up this week, and I brought some guests with me. Our new skating director, Shannon McMaster, and I brought three seniors from ETHS. They are Ms. Taya Gurman, Isabel Rikus, and Lenwhan Lewis. And they have a brief introduction that they're going to do for you guys, for your entertainment and for your pleasure.
Hi, my name is Taya, and we would like to invite Mayor Tisdale, city council members, and city clerk Rodney Green to the 40th anniversary edition of the Nutcracker on Ice.
Hi, I'm Isabel Rikus. Please accept our invitation to attend this weekend's performance of the Nutcracker. And now please turn your attention to the screen for a short video of this year's Nutcracker on Ice.
This show is our 40th anniversary, and it's bigger than any other show that we've ever done before. The sets are going to be bigger, the costumes are going to be better, and I think there's just an energy in the building that everybody's helping this year. Everybody's putting in their best effort to make this a great show.
And I know it's a tradition in Evanston, people look forward to it, people come a year to see it.
I've been doing the Nutcracker for about 11 years. When I first started, I was really small and had really small parts, but then as I improved, with the help of my coach, I got into bigger roles and eventually got to Dream Clara.
I practice roughly around like 15 hours a week, just like on my own. Since we all love it, we all work so hard to it to make it the best that it could be.
You get to see all ages of people skating, from the really little kids up to adults like me. I appreciate that fact.
I've formed a lot of friendships with people that I've participated in for the past six, seven years.
To spend so much time with these people, and they become kind of like your second family.
Everybody is just here to put on a good performance, whether it be skaters, coaches, volunteers.
The staff really has to be on top of things and, and keep things moving all the time.
We all put in a lot of hours to make sure that the show is great.
I think that it's really great that like most of Evanston knows about the Nutcracker.
My favorite part of the whole experience is just being able to skate and have an audience and be a part of something greater.
Evanston is amazing. We get so much support from this. This is their favorite show, and it drives us to do better and better every year.
Having like the whole city of Evanston come, it's wonderful. It's like exhilarating.
We do four shows, one Friday night, two Saturday, and one Sunday. We're all geared for one thing, and the set. The tickets in your hand are good for any of those four performances listed.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Luan. I want to thank you for your continuous support to the Robert Crown Center, and we hope that you'll be able to attend one of our performances.
Thank you.
And Rob, before you go, could you talk about Oprah's involvement in all this?
Through some connections, we were able to get a substantially larger donation of stage, actually, we got Oprah's Christmas set from her, the actual set that she used in her Christmas shows. And we were actually, we didn't get everything yet. We still have to go back and pick up five more pallets. And the, the sets that we're going to use are going to be a big part of the sets we're going to use this weekend. So, and we're trying to, we're trying to actually get the actual velvet curtains. We have, actually, we do have them, but they're being used right now, so we want to use, we can't use them in this show, but we will use them in next year, next year's show.
Nice.
It's a big accomplishment, so we're really excited about this year's Nutcracker show. It's a big 40th, and we're very proud of the things we're doing over there.
Great. Thank you for all you do.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Madam Mayor, a couple of other announcements. Joey Rogers, I think, is here from Peaceable Cities Evanston, and there, it looks like she has some colleagues with her to make a short presentation.
Oh, I'd like to see that. Good evening. Thank you for giving us a chance to share our excitement with you. With me tonight are my, the board members, some of the board members of Peaceable Cities, Glynnis White, Reverend Pat Effiem, and Reverend Ken Cherry. And we have a gift for you, but I want to tell you about it for just a minute beforehand. The new community directory that Peaceable Cities is gifting to the city arose from the many conversations we had with people who were very aware that Evanston is rich in resources, but very unaware and frustrated by their lack of knowledge of what the specifics are. What exactly is offered by whom? Who's eligible? What does it cost? So in response to that, we've created something called Resources for a Peaceable City. And we, this doesn't list everything that happens in Evanston. It lists those services that we believe impact the prevention of violence, the intervention of violence, and the restoration of people to their families and communities. For each entry, and it's organized by the problem you're trying to solve, not by the name of the agency. So it has things like help for teen parents, and emergency financial assistance, mentoring programs, employment help for ex-offenders. That's what our table of contents looks like. This will go live online on Wednesday, and new services can be added, or as agencies evolve and change personnel or change other things, they can fix that right on the, the website. We've done our best to be accurate, but the changing of it online is the option for our lack of perfection. The written directory is, says on the back, go for new information. But we know there are many people who are, who, for whom computer searching is not the easiest thing in the world. And we also know you generally don't go looking for something that you don't know exists. So we have made print copies, and we will, are here to give them to you tonight. Dispatch the troops. And we, we hope you will use them. We have a further offer to all of the aldermen, that we will come to your first ward meeting in 2015, and will happily give copies to the first 10 people who show up. The others, the order information is on the back. We are grateful to the agencies in our city who cooperated in putting this together, and will be grateful to you when you direct people to this, so that they can use it. If there are any questions, we're happy to...
Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Will you also be putting copies in our libraries?
Yes.
And, and other, in the community centers as well?
And the 3-1-1 center, and we will, we will have them available.
Erie Family Health Center.
Yes, and every agency that is listed there will receive a free copy. The address labels come tomorrow, and we will get those in the mail on Wednesday. And anybody who wants can order more copies. We do have to cover some of the costs of our printing, so there's a small fee attached.
Thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Alderman Burris.
Hi, Alderman Rainey and I are having a joint ward meeting on February 5th.
We'll be there.
So can you get it on your calendar?
We sure will.
Two wards in one.
Okay, the first, the first 20 people will come and get free ones.
All right, okay then. All right, thank you.
But don't, don't forget the online version. You go to peaceablecitiesevanston.org, and it will lead you to the online version of this. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, it's a great job.
Next, we have scheduled a presentation from First Night, and I don't see Ms. Guthrie here. But for those who aren't aware, on December 31st, First Night Evanston is going to be once again putting out a whole variety of musical offerings, and if people are interested, they can go to their website for more information. And last, Jim Awerm, the Assistant Director of Public Works, is here. Believe it or not, we will go from now until the 12th of January without a council meeting. So Jim is here to remind us of all the Public Works events that will occur between now and then.
Thank you, Manager Bob Gowitz. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jim Awerm, Assistant Director of Public Works, Operations and Maintenance. What I would like to do is remind all of our residents of the holiday collection schedules that are coming up in the next couple of weeks and around January 1st. So Wednesday, December 24th, and Thursday, December 25th, there'll be no recycling, solid waste collections at all. Everything will be two days later. So for example, Wednesday's route will be collected on Friday, Thursday's route will be collected on Saturday. And then moving on to the New Year's holiday, Thursday, January 1st, once again, there'll be no recycling or solid waste collections, and everything will resume on Friday, January the 2nd, 2015. All of these are posted on our website accurately and clear, concise, hopefully. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
And there'll be no snow between now and then as well.
I can't promise that.
You did so well when you first came here. We had a couple really good years.
Sadly, I think I used up all my luck.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcement.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications? Don't say it, just shake your head. Thank you. Next is public comment. We have two speakers on agenda items, John Walsh and Richard Wieland. Would you please come? And all you have to do is state your name these days.
Thank you. I'm John Walsh, President of Central Street Neighbors Association. Madam Mayor, aldermen and alderwomen of the Evanston City Council. I come to address a agenda item, which is P4, in which the city staff recommend that the council adopt a text amendment to zoning ordinance, which will abolish the prohibitions on site development allowances in planned developments in the Central Street Overlay District. The, what the staff is recommending is that some be maintained, that site development allowances for height, floor area ratio, and number of units in a development be maintained. What our board and members urge the council to do is to maintain more of the prohibitions on site development allowances than staff proposes, particularly all the setbacks on side yards, front lot lines, the step backs in height above the second floor, as well as transitional height planes. These recommendations came out of the Central Street Master Plan back in 2007, and were adopted by the council in 2008. You'll recall that just last year, in 2013, the American Planning Council recognized the Central Street neighborhood as one of the 10 best neighborhoods in America. Among the things that the American Planning Association cited were the Central Street Master Plan, the Central Station Apartments, a lead silver mixed-use project. Went on to say that several earlier multi-story mixed-use structures built to the lot line and larger in scale than surrounding commercial buildings raised concern among residents about the potential for overdevelopment and loss of the neighborhood's quote "European village" unquote charm. The city responded by amending its zoning ordinance, reducing building heights and residential densities for mixed-use structures in certain districts. Instrumental to this success of neighborhood planning is the Central Street Neighbors Association, a resident advocacy group, and the Central Street Business Association, not only supports planning efforts, but programs, community, and retail events. It goes on. Final comment from the American Planning Association is that the city adopted two zoning ordinances in 2008, laying the foundation for the use of form-based zoning in Central Street commercial area, allowing a block-by-block approach that better accounts for, excuse me, existing conditions. What city staff is asking the council to do is to abolish many of those protections that were adopted back in 2008 in order to minimize the density of development in that Central Street corridor.
John, I do need you to wrap up.
Very well. Two comments that were made two weeks ago. One is that city staff thought this was an oversight, that it was adopted. Anyone part of that process knows that it was a recommendation of the Lakota Group. Second comment was that the changing this would allow more creativity in building design. I submit that creativity for an architect arises when there are bounds and limits for him or her to work within. And so we urge you to send this back to staff and ask that more of the prohibitions on site development allowances be maintained. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have stated, each speaker has three minutes.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Wieland. I live at 1012 Hinman Avenue, and I'm speaking tonight regarding the Harley Clark Mansion and the parkland, parkland that sits under and around it, Agenda Item 01. Along with a lot of my neighbors, I'm delighted that the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has expressed interest in taking over the Harley Clark Mansion, refurbishing it, and making it the home of their coastal management program. In the city's negotiations with IDNR, there are obviously many models for putting the mansion at IDNR's service, and many, many models for their providing appropriate compensation to the city. I think the city council has an excellent understanding of the kind of treasure our lake shore represents, but there is always a risk that without appropriate safeguards, long-term values can sometimes give way to short-term needs. And once done, such, such actions are difficult to reverse. I urge the city to make sure that appropriate safeguards are included in any agreement that it makes with IDNR or any other interested party regarding the Harley Clark Mansion and related property. In particular, I urge the city council and the city manager in their negotiations to ensure that the mansion and the parkland under and around the mansion always remain in public hands, and that care is taken to ensure that neither the mansion nor the parkland ever be diverted to private development. Thank you.
Thank you. And you were right, less than three minutes. Thank you. The next two speakers are Madeleine Ducrey and Carla Sutton. There you are.
Madeleine Ducrey, good evening, everyone. Last Monday, at the Human Services Meeting, I spoke. I asked the members of the Human Services Committee to make a stand, to take a stand, stand up, speak up, take a stand for justice. Tonight, I am here in the same room. This time, I am asking the full council members of Evanston to stand up for justice. Justice for all Americans. Write a letter to the President stating what we can consider changes for the better, change laws that will help everyone. The roundtable took a stand. On Page Six, the Ferguson discussion, the Ferguson decision leaves serious and lingering questions. It's a good beginning. Peggy Tarr took a stand with her article, "For All," liberty for all, and liberty and justice for all. The churches and the clergics are beginning to speak up for fairness and justice. I attended the protest action meeting Sunday. They're beginning to speak up for fairness and justice. Reddit, R-E-D-D-I-T-T, Hudson, an ex-cop from St. Louis, Missouri, took a stand for fairness, for justice. His opinion on some police officers and their wrongful conduct helped me to balance the good, the bad, and the ugly side of some police officers. Michael Bell, an ex-marine who lives in Kenosha, Wisconsin, took a stand for justice in America when he told about his story about his son being shot in the head by a police officer. He did it peacefully. He changed some laws in Kenosha, Wisconsin, with the help of many police officers who wanted good laws on the books. The mayor of New York City took a stand for justice and spoke up. He's catching heck right now, but he spoke up. In my opinion, he did not throw his police officers under the bus. The bad and the ugly threw themselves under the bus. We must fight peacefully, prayerfully, for changes of the laws that do not protect the police officers and the people in the communities throughout the United States and the world. We must do it now, or we will face many, many things later, a magnitude of things, because the young people see things differently than most of us in this room. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carla Sutton, 1821 Darrell. I have several concerns on the West Evanston Plan that I would like to have on the record. My first concern is, since they are now with the form-based zoning, I would appreciate it if stakeholders would receive proper notification of pending changes to our community, especially regarding zoning. Number two, plans for housing development. I would prefer you also put priority on addressing the foreclosed and vacant properties and not accelerating gentrification in my community. We not only need housing for low income, but we need housing for moderate income. And I would like to see more homeownership available and less rental properties developed. Number three, I'm concerned about the increase in density and the removing of green space in my community, relocating parks for buildings. Number four, the current increase to the water for Evanston citizens. I wish you would give that same consideration to developers to pay for their own infrastructure rather than having that on us as taxpayers of the city. And that they should more have a set aside for moderate units than having a simple payment where they can be relieved of their moral obligation to provide housing for all citizens in Evanston. Number five, I'm concerned about the additional bike lanes on Church Street, as now Church and Dodge is further congested, and I hope that no accidents will occur by the widening of the sidewalks and the additional northbound lanes. And number six, I'm very concerned about what we're going to do on the traffic flow on Emerson Street. I see you got a change for Sheridan Road and Forest. I hope we could get the same consideration for Gulf Road. What I would like to see is do not block the intersection signs on Emerson Street from Jackson all the way to Leland. I also would like to see parking restrictions during rush hour to facilitate the flow. It's very difficult now for residents to get across the street during those primetime hours. And number seven, one agenda item, consideration of the purchase of 1823 Church Street. I wish the neighbors and the community would have glorification or certification that that building or that property would be considered for community use and not development. And the last two things are happy birthday, Mary Morton, Mayor Morton, and happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? Happy birthday, Lorraine. Madam Mayor and members of the council, the Administration Public Works Committee met tonight, but before that, asking you to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting November 17. The committee met tonight and asked you to approve the payroll through November 16, The bills... The bills through December 9, $19,906,477.33, and credit card activity, $142,832.15. Approval is requested of a contract with ALAMP contractors for the Civic Center Sustainable Parking Lot Reconstruction in the amount of $1,400,000. Metropolitan Water Reclamation District granted us $750,000, and there is an additional $650,000 from the parking fund that will pay for this. Your approval is requested for a contract with Construction Consulting and Disbursement Services for Minor Improvements at Chandler New Burger Center in the amount of $88,842.86. We ask your approval also for a contract with KLF Enterprises for the 2015 debris and leaf hauling in the amount of $126,000. Approval is also requested for a service agreement with Caneli Academy for Martial Arts Instruction at the Levy Center. It's a sole-source agreement through December 16, and all expenses are paid for by participants, with some left over for Recreation Department. Approval is also requested for Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue Phase 1 and 2 Engineering Services Contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering. And Sheridan Road, it includes also Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue Bike Path in the amount of $850,676. ITEP grant of $331,924 will help pay, as well as $418,752 from the 2015 Capital Improvement Fund, and $100,000 from the Washington National TIF. Your approval is requested for Change Order Number One for Sheridan Road Water Main Improvement Project for Engineering Services in the amount of $358,036 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering. Approval is requested for Change Order Number One for the 2014 Manhole Lining Contract with National Power Rotting to extend the contract for 182 days to May 31. Because of the weather, no additional charges will be incurred. Your approval is requested for Downtown Evanston's 2015 request, A5, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. A6 is approval of a grant agreement with the youth organization Umbrella, Y-O-U, to provide subcontract services for year two of the Street Outreach Program Grant. This will begin September 30, 2014, remain in effect till September 29, and shall be renewed annually upon notification of a grant award. The city will receive $38,539 during the grant period from Y-O-U. Approval of the 2015 First Night Evanston Funding Request, is this on the consent agenda? First Night, in the amount of $5,000. A7 is off the consent agenda. A8, approval of 2014 Post-Bond Issuance Report is requested, that we review and place this post-bond issuance report on file. Your approval is requested for Resolution 111R14, which authorizes a lease agreement with Latino Resources for office space in the Civic Center at the rate of $250 per month for 12 months for the 260 square feet of space on the ground floor of the Civic Center. The following, Madam Mayor and council members, are the bond abatements, and I'm going to read them as a group and not individually, thank goodness. They go from eight, the total amount of the abatement is $8,970,382. Eight million, nine hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. They go, it's a series, from A10.1, Resolution 96R14, through A10.12, Resolution 107R14. I move all of those concurrently. Next is Resolution 94R14, Dumpster Street Traffic Signal Modernization. This is a local agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation to fund the city's share of the construction costs and the Construction Engineering Services Agreement for federal participation with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick in the amount of $118,300 for Dumpster Street Traffic Signal Modernization and Coordination Project. A grant of $792,000 was received for this project from the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. Next is Resolution 95R14. We ask your approval for the adoption of this resolution, giving the manager the right to negotiate and execute construction funding agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for Sheridan Road, Forest Avenue Signal Modernization Project, and to execute a contract with Stanley Consultants in the not-to-exceed amount of $95,933 to provide the Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services. The city received $475,860 through the North Shore Council of Mayors for the project. Your approval is requested for decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Here's Wings II Evanston LLC doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, 1741 Maple Avenue. Madam Mayor, the committee requested that we move introductions, suspend the rules, and take action by the committee chair after the consent agenda. Next is Ordinance 153. This is off the consent agenda. Alderman Wilson?
Yeah. Any introductions? We can introduce.
Well, it's going to suspend the rule.
Well, I'm going to move to suspend the rule, so. It's off the consent agenda. Next is Ordinance 123014, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for property located at 745 Howard Street for the Evanston Police Department's outpost. The committee requests that we introduce and suspend the rules and have the committee chair take action. Any problems with that? All right, moving right along. Resolution 113R14 authorizes the city manager to negotiate a contract for the purchase of real property located at 1823 Church Street for an amount not to exceed $315,000. This is for action. Under Planning and Development, Resolution 93R14 designating a portion of Garrett Place east of Sheridan Road to the cul-de-sac with the honorary street name Shakespeare Garden Founder's Way. Resolution 90R14 authorizes a memorandum of understanding with the Regional Transportation Authority for a transit-oriented development parking regulation update, no cost to the city. For action tonight is Ordinance 146014 granting a special use for commercial indoor recreation barcode at 604 Davis Street. Your approval is requested for Ordinance 144014, zoning.
Alderman Rainey, could you remove that, please?
P4 is off the consent agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. Under the Human Services Committee, we have 01 and 02. Madam Mayor, both of these are going to be taken off the consent agenda, so the committee chair can elaborate to the community, because they're kind of complicated. Under the Rules Committee, I think this might need some explanation also, so I'm going to remove it from the consent agenda. Approval of Boards, Committee, and Commission Update and Recommendations. 04 is Ordinance 151014, Amending City Code and Merging the Evanston Arts Council and the Public Arts Committee for Introduction. Resolution 108R14 opposing Senate Bill 16. The school boards of Evanston Township High School, District 202, and Evanston Skokie School District adopt a joint resolution opposing the bill on November 3. This is for action. Madam Mayor has recommended the appointment of Elliot Dudnick to the Preservation Commission. Madam Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda. I move approval.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no lights for any further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through ANPW, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First is A5, the approval of the Downtown Evanston Funding Year 2015 Request for Budget Contributions in the amount of $98,000 from the Economic Development Fund, and $98,670 to be spent equally between the Washington National TIF and the Economic Development Fund. Move approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for budget contribution share. Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this off to one, see if Annie had anything to say to the full council, and to thank Downtown Evanston for all that they do for us. And, Walk, I think this is your first time coming for full approval, right?
Correct, yes.
So, thank you, and anybody?
Does anyone have any questions? You do a terrific job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
Thank you very much.
A7?
Do we need to, we need to vote? I think Annie would probably, probably like that.
I think you would like a vote. I'm sorry.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, quickly?
Alderman Wilson?
Oh, do you want me to call?
Aye.
Well, Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
You're getting better. The motion passes.
Okay, now, A7, approval of the 2015 First Night Evanston Funding Request in the amount of $5,000. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Burris.
This one I'm in opposition to. I have concerns with the budget from First Night. I have concerns that they've just asked for an increase in the last week. Their budget has doubled from last year. They did have a surplus last year, but they're still asking for, coming at the last minute to ask for money. I also have some concerns with discrepancies in their budget. They're not being fully transparent on where their funding is coming from, or really what they're spending the money on. So additionally, what they're requesting, they're asking for 5,000, what they're saying is they want 5,000 to give tokens to a specific number of not-for-profit groups, but the reality is they're just asking, they're not giving us the exact number that have been requested for those not-for-profits. So I have concerns with the way this has been handled. We understand from the city manager that the city has been trying to contact and work with First Night since July, I believe. Mr. City Manager, you say?
And just to clarify, we have been working with them for many months, but as far as any additional financial contribution from the city, that's been a not-standing issue.
Additionally, the city's giving their services pro bono, but in their budget, they list that they're paying for city services. So clearly, the budget, whoever's doing the budget, and the person that came to talk, and what they're presenting is not in full order. It doesn't make sense. So again, I always have issues giving money to organizations that present us faulty information and are misrepresenting what their actual expenses are. So, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more comments on that? Alderman Wilson?
Well, I'm going to vote yes, but I don't think that they've misrepresented anything, which is why I'm voting yes.
But did you read the budget? They have, they actually have?
They have a $500 line item for city services, so I'm not sure exactly what that could be, but I don't know that qualifies as misrepresentative. So that's all I want to talk about.
It's more, it's more than that.
It's more than what mine do.
Yeah, so.
That's an example of one thing, but.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, far be it for me to take issue with Alderman Burris and her math, but I really don't think it was misrepresenting. I think it's just, they didn't know what they were doing when they put the budget together. I really, I know, but I think they thought they knew, but they didn't. It's just a terrible budget from beginning to end, and it's an embarrassment. And I'm surprised that Emily Guthrie put her name on it, so, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
I'll be brief, Madam Mayor, but we did ask the city manager to come back with some actuals, just for those members of council that were. Yeah, but I mean, I think in general, we're going to vote to pass this. We will, and I think the information that's missing, we asked our city manager to follow up. For those who aren't on AP&amp;W, so we'll get the actuals from 2013, and then while he even suggested looking out for the next couple of years. So I think, it's a wonderful event, so we don't want to send the wrong signal around the holidays time. We'll tighten up the numbers and we'll just move forward, so. Ba-la-la-la-la. And with, I can't call the question, so I won't. Hopefully someone will call the question, we'll just.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Seeing no lights on for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Eight to one?
Eight to one, the motion passes.
All right, moving right along, A13. Ordinance 142-0-14, decreasing the number of Class C 1 liquor licensing for Here's Wings II Evanston LLC doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings at 1741 Maple Avenue. This would be a request to decrease, authorize a decrease in the liquor licensing from seven to six, because Wild Wings have, Buffalo Wild Wings has closed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
You, I'm sorry, Alderman, you suspended the rules, right?
Yes.
For that one, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. Been moved for A14, Ordinance 153-0-14, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a commercial lease with Christopher Cassis? Cassis? For the lease of the city-owned real property located at 633 Howard Street. This is in the TIF district, and let's see, was the account for monthly rental accruals from the city-owned properties? I was thinking, looking for an amount, but anyway, it's to be a coffee bar, and we would like to have suspension. I would move first the suspensions of the rules. Oh, she moved it, okay. So I just moved it.
No, I didn't. I took it off the consent.
I thought you took it off the consent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's why I got confused. So I needed to move.
Well, I'm trying to confuse you, and that's not good.
It's okay.
Okay. All right. So vote on suspending the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the rules are suspended.
Okay, and then I would move the motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm as supportive of this project as I have been of any of them on Howard Street, and you know I'm the number-one supporter of everything that happens there. I appreciate our staff's work on this. I appreciate Mr. Cassis coming forward, wanting to keep his business in Evanston. He's currently a business operator in the Second Ward, and also a resident of the Second Ward. He's staying, he's going to remain living there, but he's. He's staying, he's going to remain living there, but he's moving his business to a bigger and better location on Howard Street. And I just want to say that this property has definitely outlived its usefulness in terms of being a police outpost. We've done great work in the south end of town, including the neighborhood groups and the police department and the community policing officers, and it's really no longer a viable location. Interestingly, I mentioned this at Administration and Public Works, this property has never been on the tax rolls. It was built as an Orthodox synagogue and was purchased, I think in '99 or 2000 by the city of Evanston for the purpose of a police department and was dedicated, I think, in 2001 and has been of good service, providing for neighborhood meetings, et cetera. So having it become the missing piece of the puzzle, because we have evening and early evening activity, and now we're going to have a place in the morning where, and evidently every place that opens that is a breakfast place in the city of Evanston thrives. So we're very, very hopeful and very appreciative of the person who's going to run this. He is a fair trade purchaser and in fact pays double fair trade. He travels to South America to purchase his beans and Alderman Grover clarified tonight that he will sell beans by the pound, roasted beans by the pound. It'll be a coffee shop and snack place where you can see the coffee roasting going on while you're sitting there. So the neighborhood will be filled with great aromas and we really look forward to this. And I went only hope that all members of the council could support this, but I know that there are certain ones who just can't believe that things can be successful on Howard Street, but they are, and I think the proof is in the pudding and the best evidence is the successes that we've had so far. And so I look forward to the grand opening of this location.
Thank you. Coffee roasting operation is very important to many Evanstonians.
Yes, we need it, yes.
So I am told.
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended, are they not?
Yes, yes.
She's got this right, so.
And the.
It's been moved and seconded. So City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to one.
The motion passes.
A15, ordinance 123-0-14, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for property located at 745 Howard Street for the Evanston Police Department outpost. The city council needs to approve this by two-thirds majority vote, and I would first move suspension of the rules. Oh, she, did you, I did. All these are suspended, so I would just move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 123-0-14, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for property located at 745 Howard Street for the Evanston Police Department's outpost. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll, or do you want me to?
You go ahead.
Okay. We're starting with Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Seven to two, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works.
P.
No, no.
Planning and Development.
Sorry, I'm looking for who's the, who's the person in charge of the.
Alderman Fisk.
We have the city managers pointing out.
P4.
P4.
Oh. Thought you were trying to tell me Alderman Fisk, that's what I needed to know.
Ordinance 144-14, zoning ordinance text amendment modifications to Central Street overlay district. The plan commission and staff recommends city council adoption of ordinance 114-14 to modify certain portions of section 6-15-14, Central Street overlay district. This ordinance was introduced at the November 24, 2014 city council meeting and it is for action.
Is there a motion?
I'm not making a motion.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to discuss it?
I'm voting against it.
Okay. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Or I'll do it, sorry. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. The motion, eight to one, the motion passes. All right. And, oh. Alderman Burris, Human Services, everything's off the consent agenda.
Pardon? I'm, Alderman Braithwaite will be the chair next month of Human Services. Yay. I move O1, approval of Harley Clark Mansion update and memorandum of understanding for moving assistance for the Evanston Arts Center. I'm going to kind of walk through this versus just read it because it's a little confusing unless you were at the meeting, because we, some of the things we kept on the agenda and some of the things that were requested, we came off. So the first, what we're asking for is to receive the report from the Evanston Arts Center and from Mr. Bob Kowitz regarding updates from IDNR. The, we asked that the city council approve the moving expenses of $5,000 for the Evanston Arts Center. We also asked that we give approval to Mr. Bob Kowitz to extend the lease to May 31, 2015. We also asked for approval to provide trash from recycling containers as the Arts Center vacates the mansion. So, and we request that Mr. Bob Kowitz is given authorization to speak with IDNR to determine their plans moving forward. So what was left off was the exact amount of waiving city fees related to the move. What, we're not saying that we won't waive any of the fees, but we want to come back to Human Services to have more of a discussion of other not-for-profits that may be moving, what will we do to help them, and come up with a standard percentage. So we've left those off for now and we'll be speaking about them next month. Is anybody from the committee, is that a good explanation of how we, so?
Absolutely.
Got it.
I apologize that it's so convoluted on here, but.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's the motion.
All right.
A confusing motion, but the next one's confusing too.
I think the important piece is that we're trying to come up with a policy so that we will have, if other requests come in, that we already have something in place.
Which they will.
Rather than.
Which they will.
Which they will, absolutely they will, and we want to not just keep doing it haphazardly, but to actually have a policy in place.
Thank you for the explanation. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
I can do it. You sound good.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
He goes in the middle.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Thank you. I ask that you move O2, approve of Human Services funding summit recommendations. I'm going to walk through this again because there's a lot of discussion at our meeting about this as well. The, what we've asked, we want to approve is combining the two applications into one, creating a universal application for both funding types, which we talked about at the summit a couple of months ago. We also talked about the Human Services meeting. We also, I would like approval for holding universal hearings to review applications for funding, so the notion of a super Saturday kind of thing. Considering appointing an alderman to the mental health board, there's a little bit of discussion about, would that be actually a person, an alderman that sits on the mental health board or an alderman that's a liaison to the mental health board? So that's something that needs to be considered by Human Services specifically, and then coming back to the council. And then we're also asking to hold a joint meeting between the mental health board, the Housing Community Development Act Committee, and the Human Services Committee in January to discuss priorities for funding going forward, so getting, reconvening that group as we discussed. And that is my motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
I think I remember, and maybe I'm just remembering how I wanted it to happen, now how it actually did happen, but as to item three, I think we wanted to really change that to appointing an aldermanic liaison to mental health board, only because it was superseded by our next agenda item, which was the recommendation as to all boards and committees, that there simply be liaison assignments.
Right.
So if I may amend your.
No, that's fine.
Your motion to provide for, consider appointing an aldermanic liaison to the mental health board.
Second. Let's vote on approving the Human Services Funding Summit Recommendations as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you for bearing with me on.
Does that conclude your report? Alderman Burris? Yes, it does. The Rules Committee has approval of Boards, Committees and Commissions' update and recommendations. I move approval. Is there a second?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And that brings us to Call of the Wards. Alderman Wilson? Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd first just like to thank the council for your support in the purchase of 1823 Church Street. Also would like to invite you to the Fifth Ward Holiday Party next Thursday, December 18, at 7:00 PM at Fleetwood, and just to wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to welcome one of the city's newest residents. Her name is Mom, and I doubt she's watching.
She's lovely.
She is, but welcome, and I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
So is your mom giving you 20 bucks for that plug? Is that what's happened there? I want to thank the Evanston Symphony Orchestra for a really fantastic concert yesterday afternoon, as well as the ETHS Acapella Singers and Dr. Reed, who directs the group, the Evanston Children's Choir, the North Shore Corral Dance Ensemble, Evanston Dance Ensemble in Santa Claus for a really delightful, wonderful holiday afternoon.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I regret that I forgot to mention this at our last Call of the Wards, but I want to congratulate our dear, dear colleague, the Honorable Anjana Hansen, who was inducted into the Circuit Court of Cook County about a week or so ago, and just wish her all the best. We know what a wonderful, fair person she is and what a great job she's going to do, and how honored we all are to know her and the other two members of this council more recently, but in the past, there have been other people who became judges from here. So, and also, happy holidays to everybody and please be safe.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I want to echo what Alderman Grover said about the event yesterday, the Evanston Symphony Orchestra Holiday Extravaganza was really fantastic, well-attended, and the Santa was amazing. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy birthday to Lorraine Morton. I think that's fabulous and always a credit to our community. We're just so proud of you. Want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also like to wish a very happy birthday to our mayor, Lorraine, former mayor, Lorraine Morton. I know she's always watching our meetings. Ninety-six years is just incredible for a woman who's so sharp and witty, and I appreciate all your words of encouragement. I also want to wish our residents and my colleagues and city staff a happy holidays. I'm looking forward to not seeing you all over the next couple of months, so have fun during our break. I mean that, I mean that. And then to the residents of the Second Ward on December 11th at 6:00 PM, I'm inviting you to join myself, our city staff and folks from Leather's Associates. We will have yet another meeting to discuss Penny Park, and residents will have an opportunity to give their feedback for Design Day schematic. We'll also have a 3D rendering. We'll also discuss the site plan layout with an option of a restroom and shelter, and also do a comparison between the new current standards in play equipment and what's currently in play. So a wonderful opportunity for those who are interested. The other thing that I would like to share, there's a group out there that's sharing information, so I encourage for those that are paying attention, either, you know, grab their information, whether it's from our newsprint that reports, or look for information that has our city of Evanston logo. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Valley Tour.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, thank you. This Tuesday, December 9, and also Saturday, December 13, I want to thank our city staff, Community and Economic Development. We will be doing a tour of Valley. If you want more information, residents, I encourage you to call 311 or, it's been on our website. And so the pickup sites will be Fleetwood Jordane on.
Can't remember.
Yep, well, we'll have to get that also, and then also the Levy Center. And so I think we're going to arrange one more pickup in the Second Ward as well, so thank you to our city staff for setting that up.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing that I'm sorry I missed tonight, not that I usually mind missing, mind being anyplace else but here, but the author Claude Steele, who is the author of Whistling Vivaldi, was at the high school tonight, and I urge, I'm reading the book, I urge all of you to pick it up and read it.